Hello.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing alright, how about yourself?
Good?
Good.
Oh, let's see, oh, there's my video.
There we go.
Right.
Hey, Chris.
Hello, can you guys see me?
Uh, I cannot, no.
Hmm, yeah, it's not showing.
I rang up all these chats. But I can't process because I forgot.
There we go.
Oh, there you are. Justin, are you there?
Hello.
Hey. Yes, I can see you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good. Doing fine.
Could? You're at work?
Yeah, yep. Figured I'd just stick around that.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you.
Working from home is tough.
It is. Doing this like from like, I like to have like, I don't know, I'm just like a creature of habit, so I prefer to be with the group and so I can see what's going on and everything, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my personal.
Oh, I hear you. No, human interaction is important in life.
Yeah. Especially right now, so, so good.
I don't realize how much something like that means to you until, till this whole thing happened.
It's been taken away, absolutely. Absolutely. How you doing, Chris? Everything going alright?
Yeah, yeah, how about you?
Hanging in there.
Yep.
There. Didn't, we didn't trick or treat or have people trick or treat this year, so that was kinda tough, but.
Yeah, no, we didn't hand out any candy. I did see people coming around the neighborhood, though.
You did? Yeah, I, I was surprised, but.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few people, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, you know, we didn't, we didn't join in this year at all.
We didn't either, so. I felt bad, but.
Yeah, no, same here.
Yeah. I don't do a lot of the Zoom stuff, so bear with me.
I'm doing fine. It's interesting to see court that's handled by Zoom.
I bet, yeah.
Is everyone gonna be here today, Mike?
Oh, you know, I thought Chet was not going to be here, but he is just signing in.
Awesome.
Then Zach and Phil should be here as well.
Okay. Hey, Chet.
Hey, Chet.
Howdy.
Able to, I thought you weren't gonna be able to join us tonight. Changed your plan? I, I didn't think you were gonna be able to join us tonight.
Yeah, I'm in a hotel room.
Okay. Wow. Going the extra mile, alright.
Nice, nice thing about Zoom meetings, you can be pretty remote.
Hopefully someplace nice.
Or me?
Hopefully someplace nice.
We're headed down to Florida, but we're in Knoxville right now.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So.
Halfway point.
Yeah.
Well, not quite. We're, we're spinning halfway beyond Atlanta, and that's a long drive.
That is a long drive. Yeah, we did that one time. What part of Florida are you going to, if I can ask, if you're okay?
Yeah, Antarctica Island, you know where that is?
I'm not familiar with that.
It's, um, south of, it's probably halfway between Tampa and, on the Gulf Coast and Fort Myers.
Okay. Okay, cuz we go to Sanibel Island all the time, right off of Fort Myers.
Yeah, it's nice.
So, yeah.
We're over there, but.
Okay, yeah, awesome. Well, have a great time.
Thank you. I'm sure we will. Hurricane's gone.
Yeah. That's good.
Looks like Zach is joining us.
Hey, Mike, I'm trying to get my camera started. This is Phil.
Okay.
But I'm here.
Okay. Let me see if I can start for you.
So, I'll have to re, uh, restart my Zoom if you want my camera on, otherwise I can just do audio.
That's, that's up to you. I think it's fine to just, uh, join by audio.
Okay, I'll do it next time then.
Alright, well, members are present, so Phil, we can get started when you're ready.
Awesome. I've just, now I got to rearrange my screens, so bear with me just a second. Alright, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. I've got it right at seven o'clock, Mike.
Alright.
Do you wanna do a roll call?
Sure, and so everyone's aware, um, under the current state orders, you'll need to state just the city and state at minimum that you're participating from. So, Wise?
Present, Dexter, Michigan.
Hill? Oh, let me unmute you, Phil.
I muted now?
Chat, oh, sorry, chat.
Yeah, I'm sorry, too. Um, this is Chad Hill. Um, I'm in Knoxville, Tennessee, tonight.
Right, and Walker?
Uh, present, uh, here in Dexter, Michigan.
And Michelle's?
Dexter, Michigan.
Alright.
And I'm in Dexter, Michigan also.
Oh, sorry, Phil.
Okay.
And Vickers. Alright, now all members are present.
I think I'm looking at the right, uh... Well, I thought I was looking at the right agenda. Hang on one second. There's the agenda. Alright, call to order, approval of minutes. Anybody take a look at the minutes? Any questions or comments or changes? Alright, seen none. Uh, does anybody want to move to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Mike, did you get that?
I did, uh, move by, uh, Chris Wallerker.
Correct.
Do I have a second out there?
One second.
Alright.
Second by Wise, and...
Alright. Uh, Mike, I'm gonna ask you all these questions just to make sure, we don't need to do a roll call just because we're on a Zoom meeting doing.
I'm not, I'm not for the, uh, the minutes.
Okay, if, if there's something that we need to do a roll call rather than just a, a voice vote, if you would just kinda pipe up and let me know.
Sure.
Seems like things have changed since with Zoom and all that, so if I screw up, just help me out, please.
Will do.
So, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, uh, the minutes are approved as is. Uh, and then approval of agenda. Anybody have a problem with the agenda? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make an emotion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Alright, Mike, we've got a motion in a second. As soon as you're ready, let me know and I can call for a vote.
Um, move by Wise, second by Wallerker.
Perfect. Uh, all those in favor of approval of the agenda, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, and staff report, Mike?
Sure, so the, um, Michelle's, uh, staff report, the Michelle Anioli Community Development Manager, um, has provided in your packet. Does anyone have any questions on, uh, Michelle's report?
Alright, I don't see any. Is there any particular things that we, you wanted to alert us to, Mike?
Um, there are, there are no, um, no, I don't have any verbal updates for you.
Okay.
Everything is pretty much as it is in the report.
Perfect. Alright, and let me switch back to screens. Sorry, I'm switching back and forth between screens to keep up with your, uh, agenda. Uh, hopefully we all did that site inspection already. Does anybody have a conflict of interest that they need to, uh, let us all know about?
I don't think I'm conflicted out, but my law firm used to represent Oxford Management, um, at one point.
Well, and I know Oxford used to own it, or I used to manage it, do they still?
Oxford still does manage the property.
Um, so I don't think that that's a conflict. Does anybody else on the board have a problem with it?
I, I don't believe it is, since, since it was used to.
Right, okay. I think we can move on then. So, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing, the only, the one and only that we have for tonight. Um, let me get down to the right page. Let's see. Mike, is that roughly page, uh, ten of thirty-four?
Um, the case starts on, um, sorry, just a moment.
Nine of three four. I got it, yep, I found it. Sorry, I was trying to page through. Alright, so we're gonna talk about, um, what is it, AP twenty twenty dot twenty-one dash oh four ZBA seven oh three nine Dexter and Arbor Road?
That's correct. And so, um, the order will be, um, Phil, you'll introduce the case, um, and staff will give a presentation. Uh, the petitioner will then have an opportunity to present and ask your que, answer questions from the board, and then, um, Phil, you will, uh, you can, uh, open the public hearing and take comments from the, the public.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm look, I'm looking through the stuff that I normally find right on the surface. I apologize. So, let's go ahead and start the case, uh, hearing the case. Um, is that the number that I need to put on record? Is just AP twenty twenty dot twenty-one dash oh four, Mike?
Yeah.
For you?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, sorry, I thought you were saying that I needed to mention something different. So, we'll go ahead and let Mike, uh, start us off here, uh, with the staff presentation, and then, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the petitioner's presentation. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, um, so, uh, this evening, the board scheduled to, uh, hold a public hearing, um, to consider a variance request, AP twenty twenty dot twenty-one dash oh four, um, for property located at seventy thirty-nine Dexter and Arbor Road, which is an address in the Dexter Crossing Commercial Center, which is, uh, located at seven oh six one Dexter and Arbor Road. The applicant, Metro, uh, Metro Detroit Signs, uh, on behalf of Dollar Tree, and with authorization of the property owner Dexter Crossing LLC, um, is requesting two variances in order to construct a building sign, um, with an area, a proposed area of eighty-nine point six square feet. The property is zoned, uh, PUD C1 and is located in the Dexter and Arbor Road, uh, excuse me, Dexter and Arbor Road Corridor Overlay District. In the approved, uh, PUD area plan, um, specified that the C1 standards apply, um, and in this case, they have a live resignage. So, the, the first variance request is for a three point three square foot variance, um, from the one square foot of sign area per one linear foot of building frontage per tenant in a multi-tenant building, which is established in section seven point oh four one A of the zoning ordinance. And the variance is necessary because the subject site has a frontage of eighty-six point three feet. Um, the second request is for a forty-seven point six square foot variance from the forty-two square foot, um, building sign area limit established in section seven point oh four two of the zoning ordinance. So, section twenty-four point oh six A of the zoning ordinance establishes the criteria applicable to variance consideration, uh, in accordance with the, uh, with Michigan Public Act one ten two thousand and six as amended. So, in reviewing the criteria, the ZBA must determine that all of them have been met in order to grant a variance. Um, so, I'll, I'll begin with the first criteria is practical difficulties, and in the context of a variance, a practical difficulty exists when some characteristic of a property, um, a unique characteristic that has to do with the way the land was divided or natural feature of the property, um, creates a practical, practical difficulty when the ordinance is strictly applied. So, in this case, um, there are some characteristics of the property that could be considered a practical difficulty or considered to create one. The commercial center is set back approximately four hundred and ten feet, um, from the roadway curb to the facade of the building, uh, and Dexter and Arbor Road as opposed to speed limit of fifty miles per hour. Um, and both of these could, um, impact the legibility of the sign for drivers traveling down Dexter and Arbor Road. And there are, um, some, uh, methods available for evaluating the sign's legibility, um, as drivers traveling on the roadway could read it. Um, and as a starting place, the American Planning Association recommends using the United States Sign Council's, uh, best, best practice standards, um, to evaluate a sign's legibility to drivers, given its distance from the roadway, roadway conditions, uh, and a number of other factors. So, I describe, um, how this review works in your staff report, and we'll take, um, uh, specific questions afterwards, but to summarize, a sign's legibility, uh, is in part a function of the letter height and the distance that the sign is set back from the roadway, so taking into account vehicle speed, um, the fact that the sign is parallel to the roadway, and other, and the other conditions of the site. With a detailed analysis, it could be the case that the sign could be upwards of three times as difficult to read than it would be if the reader was perpendicular to the sign with no obstructions. And so, uh, again, while the, the, the evaluation in your staff report is only meant to be preliminary, um, and applying this formula in, as it should be with the amount of, like, with capturing all of the actual details of the site, would require a review by an engineer or someone, um, first in completing that sort of analysis, but as a general measure, the sign letter height, as stated by the applicant, if they were to comply with the city's, uh, maximum area requirement, would be at the lower end of what is legible from the roadway. Um, so, uh, in staff's review, that particular aspect of the property is, uh, most leans toward what could be considered as a practical difficulty. The next criteria is, uh, substantial justice, um, which, in order for this to be met, the board would need to find that, um, the subject site circumstances are exceptional when compared to other similarly zoned properties, and that if the variance were granted, it would provide some relief to the applicant without doing an injustice to other property owners who are subject to the same standards. And so, a, a lot of that determination will have to do with whether the board finds the site circumstances are exceptional and taking into account the circumstances of other similarly zoned properties. So, the next criteria, um, has to do with public safety and welfare, and whether the board determines that granting the requested variance, would be consistent with the spirit of the city zoning regulations, um, and would advance, uh, the same public safety and welfare that the zoning ordinance is established to do. Um, so, staff does not believe that granting the requested variance would be a detriment to public safety. If, if the board agrees with the legibility considerations for practical difficulty, granting the requested variance could provide, um, some improved, uh, um, safety by improving the legibility of the sign to drivers on the roadway. However, this needs to be balanced with the fact that, um, the city's sign requirements were established to advance public sa, um, health, safety and welfare, um, not only traffic safety implications, but al, also the, um, intent established in the master plan for the design and built environment of the corridor. The next criteria is extraordinary circumstances, and this determination, um, has to do with, um, the specifics char, the specific characteristics that the board cites that make this site, um, exceptional when compared to others that are zoned similarly. This, those circumstances also can't be self-created, so there are a number of factors, uh, to consider here. As mentioned previously, um, the shopping center is set back farther from the street than any other property that is zone C1 in the Ann Arbor Road Corridor. And only two other properties in the same district have a frontage along a fifty mile per hour road. However, um, the subject site is one of two parcels within the Dexter Crossing PUD, and while it has the greatest setback from the roadway, other properties also have a substantial setback, so the board will need to consider the uniqueness of the subject site with the fact that other properties are also setback from the road. Well, uh, any variance request should first and foremost be decided on its own merits. Um, there is a, the previous boards have granted variances to other properties in the zoning district, uh, including one property in the shopping center, as well as, um, a variance allowing for a larger sign for bushes and LaFontaine Chevrolet. And lastly, when it comes to self-creation, um, there are several aspects to consider. Um, first, the, um, the current property owner's immediate predecessor and title is responsible, is the developer of the site, and so, by definition, um, it's the self-creation is the property owner's responsibility, and it would be considered a self-created hardship, um, in that case. Um, however, it, the board could find that, um, in the strict application of the C1 sign standards over the last, uh, just over twenty years, um, that there's, um, evidence to demonstrate that a practical difficulty does exist, and that granting the requested variance could provide relief to the applicant in a way that's consistent with the site layout that was originally approved, uh, by the village council. The next criteria is nuisance, uh, has to do with, uh, sorry, safety hazard or nuisance. Um, granting of a variance or appeal would not increase the hazard of fire or other or otherwise endanger public safety or create public nuisance. Staff does not believe that granting the requested variance would create a nuisance. Um, last criteria has to do with the relationship to adjacent land uses and the variance request compatibility with the intent of the master plan. So, again, this is, um, the board will have to make a determination as to whether the granting variance would be a step towards, um, uh, modernizing, I guess is one way to put it, the, the architectural standards of the corridor. Um, the planning commission will soon be considering the zoning ordinance update, uh, and one of the stated objectives of the master plan, uh, is to provide updated architectural standards that require quality but realistic building design in keeping with the established fabric of the corridor, and that's specific to the Dexter and Arbor Road overlay. Um, however, like I mentioned before, the current standards are also based on the master plan. So, um, that concludes a staff review. Um, I'll, I feel I can take any questions now or, um, or later on, whichever you prefer, or you could hear from the applicant.
Well, I, I think it's good, if anybody has, uh, before we hear from the applicant, any clarification questions rather than substance questions for Mike?
I have, um, I have one question, or actually, I've got a comment on a question. The sign letters are thirty-six inches tall. Um, they, the applicant didn't increase the size of the channel that they're installed in, did they? In other words, it's still the same size in that respect to all of the other, um, stores. Am I correct in that? In other words, they're not making the whole, not making the whole thing bigger, just they're filling it with thirty-six inch letters rather than eighteen inch letters or whatever. Am I right in that?
Um, if I, if I understand you correctly, the, um, uh, you mean that the proportion, like, the, the, uh, the, essentially the font and size lettering would stay the same as its proportion to be eight inches in height to their proposed thirty-six inches in height?
No, 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 the, the whole, the whole sign itself is however long the, the building face is, and I don't know what that is. And the, to me, um, the sign letters, they're thirty-six inches, are fine, as long as in getting thirty-six inches, they didn't also increase the size of the background that they're mounted on. I, I guess I'm having difficulty describing what I'm, or, uh, describing what my question is there.
Maybe that would be a question, um, better directed to the applicant.
Possibly.
It looks like it's the, it doesn't look like they've increased it, but I just thought it's worth asking.
Well, and, and to that point, I actually have more of a clarification question to Mike. Are the, the, the square footage that we're looking at for this sign, I see that it's basically individual letters that are all separate. Uh, they're not connected by a, a, a formal background, it's just gonna spell out Dollar Tree in green letters that are gonna be kinda letters floating up there, correct?
That's correct.
Now, do you look at the actual surface area, or do you draw basically a square around each letter and claim that that's the surface area?
The total area, yes, um, and I'll have to look up the specific ordinance language, but the total area of the sign would be essentially the outermost dimensions of sign.
So, as if there were, as if there was a square behind each letter that was part of the sign, that's exactly the dimension of the outermost dimension of that letter?
Making one big square, which would be the area, yes.
Okay, alright. That's, that, that answers my clarification that I needed.
I, I have one question for Mike. Mike, when you did the, um, information about, um, the, uh, practical difficulty because of the speed limit, was the light that's right there down holly, was that taken in consideration at all or not in your?
No.
Okay.
Um, the rough guideline that the APA identifies is that when all the, um, the site-specific and roadway factors are taken into account, and then there are methods for quantifying those,
Mm-hmm.
um, that in some cases, at the most extreme angles of vision, the legibility of the sign could be, uh, near, up to three times as difficult for a driver to read. However, applying those properly, taking into account the light, um, obstructions, I think there, there are, um, quantitative methods for applying those. Those are just, I, I, I didn't do that, that's beyond my area of expertise, so, we would have to get the city engineer involved to, to do something like that.
Alright, thank you.
I, I have one question, excuse me. How big is the Noble appliance sign?
That sign is just under the forty-two square feet. It is... So, it's thirty-one inches in height, but that includes the logo. The lettering is approximately eighteen inches in height. And the overall length is a hundred and ninety-three inches. And the overall length is a hundred ninety-three inches.
It would have been nice for them to have shown their sign and. Some of the other signs to see them in comparison with each other, although I I'm inclined to think they wouldn't want to do that. And obviously, we could see it when it went out and hurt.
Let's let's keep the discussion to the discussion chat, let's move on to unless we've got clarification, again. We're we're using this time right now for clarification questions to Mike on his presentation and then we can move on to the. Petitioners' presentation along with then our discussion. Zach, you've got a couple of clarification questions?
Yep. Someone already asked that one. My quick math looking at the. Plot plan for the development shows there are roughly nineteen other units that are. Similar distance from the road, does that seem consistent with your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, and the large setback wasn't required by the zoning ordinance at the time. To the best of my knowledge. Is that consistent with yours that it was placed back there because of the parking that was placed and not because zoning orange required four hundred and ten foot setback?
I believe so, I haven't reviewed the standards at the time to. See if it was if that setback was actually required. But yes, I that's that's my understanding as well.
All right, and for someone else who's lived here a bit longer, I suppose this may be a more accurate question is. I would suspect that the speed limit out there hasn't been increased. From something lower up to something up to fifty miles per hour it is that it is now, does anyone have knowledge on that?
I've lived here for twenty years roughly and I think it's been the same the entire time.
All right, I'm all good for trial, thanks.
Great, so with no more clarification questions for Mike, I think we'll move on to the presenter. I'm not sure I can see a name or anything on my screen.
The representative is Mr. Paul Dieter.
There he is, he was off screen, sorry, sorry, Paul. Welcome, Paul, if you'd state your your name and tell us about your petition, please.
Terrific, and my name is Paul Dieters, I'm with Metro Signs and Lighting, one one four 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 Colts Avenue in Warren. And thank you for your consideration of our case this evening. And and I'd say Mr. Auerbeck did a terrific job summarizing this, I'm not going to reiterate a number of the points that he made. But would just like the the board to consider a few things is that. The signage that we're proposing is is very consistent with what the other anchor tenants within the shopping center have. Those that have similar sized storefronts, as you know, Dollar Tree is in the center, but the. The left and the right end of the of the tenants of the of the center. Have signage that that exceeds what we are what we are asking for, but those two tenants have similar storefronts. And I think that the the signage that we're proposing is. In the spirit of the ordinance, considering the scale of that building. You know, realizing this, the Dollar Tree space is two to three times. What a typical storefront would be in that shopping center and and we're asking for. Roughly two times what the what the signage would normally allow, so I think it's it's still within the ordinance of that. And then to address a a question that Mr. Hill had had posed earlier. That we we are not proposing any sort of addition or modification to the. Standard sign band that fits within that center. The Dollar Tree lettering will fit within that three-foot area that is generally considered the sign band. That is consistent across that entire space. So. That that's pretty much all I have for this evening. And but I'm happy to entertain any questions any of you might have.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and close the petitioner's presentation. And now Mike will open the public hearing. And I don't believe we have any joiners on the meeting, do we, Mike?
I don't see any other participants in the meeting.
Okay. So we'll we'll just skip right ahead, we'll we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Zach. The. Planning Commissioner, Mr. Kyle Marsh did submit.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a moment. That I can quickly read into the minutes here. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the sign variance requested by Dollar Tree, the law stated. Is clearly stated and I see no hardship which would exempt the applicant from the ordinance as stated. The fact that the storefronts larger does not mean that they get a larger sign, especially not a backlit sign. Which has little if any artistic or aesthetic value. People in the community will know where the store is, rest assured that a similar sign, a smaller sign will not. Will not mean business will be hurt. And would we give the same consideration to a small local business instead of a large corporate chain hardly? I feel that in the interest of fairness that we ensure the law is equally applied and no special exemption. Be given rules are rules and it's particular and it's particularly for situations like this when corporations. With the resources to try to trample the rules put in. Placed by the citizenry in which rules need the clearest and most steadfast defense. I urge the Z B A to uphold the law as written and reject the request. From the Sign Shop in Warren on behalf of the landlord from Ann Arbor to put a big Dollar Tree sign in Dexter. Where it has never been and will never be appropriate, Kyle J. Marsh.
All right, is that part of the public hearing then, Mike?
Yes, yeah.
So now we should go ahead and close the public hearing, I've got seven thirty for that, in case you need to make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
And then I would open public comment. There is no public available, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. Paul, we really only read that letter into the the minutes. So if you would like to rebut that letter, you're you're more than welcome to.
Well, thank you, I I I appreciate the the gentleman's concern that he had here, but but would. Would offer up that that there is precedent in the community for for these type of unique circumstances where. A a large tenant i- in a space that is a long way from the road. And that's the entire reason for the variances, whether it's the bushes site, the LaFontaine site. Or even the Saint Joseph's site, which which is inside the same center. And these are unique circumstances and that's the entire reason for the for the appeal. For the anchor tenants to take up an awful lot of space in these for the visibility. For them to be able to to draw people into the to the center. And we hope that the the board would consider that in your in your evaluation of this case because. It certainly there is a precedent within the community to allow for this type of signage. So thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dieters, I appreciate those extra comments. So let's go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Sorry, I feel like I've done that a couple of times, but I'm getting ahead of myself. And then we will go ahead and open the the business session so that we can all discuss this. And so if 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 anybody would like to kick that off, you're more than welcome to.
Well, I sort of did. Previously, my only comment was that it would have been nice to see this in relationship to the other signs that are already out there. As as part of the drawing, but. Neither here nor there, really.
Yeah, it was, I I agree with you in a way, Chad, it was hard to tell exactly and it sounds like. The new appliance store is going to be within the variance, or I'm sorry, within within the ordinance. Is that right, Mike?
I'm sorry, the the new appliance store?
The sign.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean.
Is it Herders Appliance Store or? Noble appliance.
Mobile appliance, they they've already. Applied. For a permit to build a sign that does comply with. Ordinance requirements and have.
All right.
I'm so unless I misunderstood I misunderstood your question, I'm the way that the. This application is submitted, the only suite index to crossing that. Would be granted this variance is the seven oh three nine address.
So Saint Joe's is within the ordinance as well?
They that is the others suite that received a variance. Yeah, so. The variance, i- if this variance were granted and that other variance are the only. Two that would apply to the property.
Yep. All right. Chris, I'm gonna, just because you're right next to Mike on my screen, do you have any questions, comments or thoughts that you want to share with us?
One of my, you know, I I look through these studies and I have a hard time with. The the standards here, Mike. But I guess my overarching question would be is is a larger sign generally safer than a smaller sign for for. Motor vehicles that are passing by?
Well, I guess that the answer does get complicated, I think. The letter sizing is a component of legibility. I think that. All 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 the those that that evaluation as as supplied in your staff report really tells us is that. Perhaps a a larger sign would be more legible. But it is just a rough measure, so. To get more specifics on that. More analysis would need to be done.
Okay.
Mr. Wise, do you, you're next on my screen?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I like the because they already have the the tenant panel, you guys see the tenant panel? Yep, so we already know what businesses are in there, so when you're driving by there, you're typically going to be looking at that anyways. In my opinion, and then I'm going back to the section four. We're talking about extraordinary circumstances and in this situation, because of the parking area that they did when they built this site. This was already set upon by them at that time, so my opinion is that. It's it was already, you know, it's it's self-created. I I I I'm just not. I'm not for it, but that's. That's just my two cents on it.
Sure. Chat, would you like to chime in a little bit?
I I have a question in that regard, if. If. We were to table this and request a. An image that showed something in between what's allowed and what you're showing. In other words, rather than three foot, two foot letters. Would that be appropriate? They. They are big and I have trouble visualizing how big they're gonna be or really gonna be compared to everything else out there. On the surface, I'm. I'm kind of a sign, not the I don't like signs, but at the same time. If as long as it doesn't overpower the site, then I'm. I'm, you know, I'm I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but it would be nice to see if something's far would accomplish the same thing everybody else accomplishes. And come closer to what the ordinance calls for, I do understand that sticking to the ordinance on a building such as this as far away. As it is from the right of way. Creates, I do think it does create a hardship, it's, say you're. Quarter mile away, well, you're gonna even need a bigger sign, so there are ordinance things that. That comply and certainly you wouldn't want to deviate in your in the downtown area, there's no question about that. But out here.
I I I disagree with that, chat, I mean, you can't enforce the rule to let it along one area and not in another area.
Well, I I I understand what you're saying, but if someone came from downtown. Came forward with a with the same request thirty-six inch letters, I for one would say. Impossible, you know, it would overpower everything there. So I think that distance relationship does have some bearing on it, I mean, the distance from the road.
And and I I agree with that chat in a way, but also. You know, I I I think extra-large letters could be overpowering to somebody that isn't looking for Dollar Tree. And you see this giant sign and holy cow, there's this giant sign over here. That could be considered a nuisance and a public safety problem as well. And I think to to Mr. Wise's comment of that's why we let them put that. I don't remember the the name that you used, Mr. Wise, but.
Panel?
The the panel, correct, out out by the road, that's why that's there. So that when people are driving by to try to find a place, they look at that rather than trying to crane their necks if that's a nuisance. You know, they should be looking for the panel rather than the the sign on the building. And then you look for the sign on the building once you're in the parking lot. At least that's kind of the way I see it. But, you know. That I I appreciate your comment, I mean, I really do, it's 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 hard, it's really hard to judge. You know, safety for people that aren't safety experts and and, you know, all that kind of stuff. Zach, you're last on my list.
The program too. So I'm gonna start by saying. I've driven by the site at night and day. I I was able to see the noble sign, noble appliance sign a bit better at night than at day and that's a function of, I think, the background. Behind it is a bit wonky, so it's it's a lot of confusion going on in the daytime. Personally, I don't think the size of the signs are offensive to the senses. However, that's not what the variance question is, that's more policy planning commission, city council question to set the standards. So in order to to grant variance from those standards. There are three of them that I'm having problems being able to come up with answers for, one is the practical difficulty. There are a lot of businesses in that center that have signs that meet the the standards. I know where Jet's Pizza is, I know where Chayla's is. Without having a large sign. It's certainly easier to have a bigger sign because you get folks who may not know your business exists, but. You know, and even as I was driving by there, they were already preparing the inside of the building, which leads me to believe that. They're okay using the site even if they don't get the variance for the bigger sign. Similar thing for substantial justice is there are. Other signs out there for businesses that do meet the sign standard within the the commercial area. The extraordinary circumstances is is tricky for me to to meet. It is peculiar with the setbacks, but my understanding is the city didn't require the big of a setback. The speed limits on the street have been the same, it is peculiar and that may. Be a good reason to reviewing that as part of our zoning ordinance work in the future. But it it's difficult for me to support because I can't find good answers for those three areas that we need to find in order to grant it. As. Chairperson Mecca's alluded to. Most folks finding this too, and this is my experience driving around is. You find the sign on the street and you pull into the center and then you use the sign on the building. To know where to park. And that that was my experience going in there as I tried to find the different things that run the front of it. So I understand the need for a bigger sign and the want and the desire, I don't think it's particularly burdensome. But I can't find the criteria to support a vote for the variances tonight. I guess that's that's my contribution.
All right, well, I don't I don't think that I have anything extra to add that I haven't already added. So I would ask if anybody has the feeling of suggesting a motion that we should vote for. On this request?
All right, I guess I'll make a motion. Based on the information provided by the applicant and the staff at the November sixteenth, twenty twenty zoning. Board of Appeals meeting, the board determines that the variances requested in the application A P. Board of Appeals meeting, the board determines that the variances requested in an application AP twenty twenty point two one dash zero four ZBA uh, seventy thirty-nine Dexter Ann Arbor Road submitted by Metro Detroit Signs on behalf of Dollar Tree for the property located at seven zero nine, I mean, seven zero three nine Dexter Ann Arbor Road in Dexter Crossing Commercial Center. Seven zero six one Dexter Ann Arbor Road, Dexter, Michigan. Uh, fails to meet the criteria required for considering a variance request pursuant to section twenty-four point zero six A. Therefore, let it be resolved that the zoning board of appeals does not grant the following variances. One, a three point three, uh, square foot variance from the one square foot uh, of sign area per one linear foot of building frontage per tenant limit established in section seven point zero four one A of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance. Two, a forty-seven point six square foot variance from the forty-two square foot building sign area limit established in section seven point zero four two of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance. Let it be further resolved at the maximum, that a maximum, a building sign with an area of eighty-nine point six square feet shall, will, shall be not permitted in order for the applicant to construct a building sign subject to the following conditions. The determination was made that the following findings per section twenty-four point zero six A of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance findings practical difficulties is the standard to met, no substantial justice, no public safety and welfare. I, I'm not sure, but, uh, due to the fact that we are unable to meet the practical difficulty standard, that would be my issue. Do I need to go through all six of them?
No, you're good. I, I would, I would just ask you to add extraordinary circumstances not being met as well.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll add, uh, that extraordinary circumstances are also not met.
All right.
I, I can second that if you, I think you need a second, right?
I was just going to ask, so thanks for, uh, getting one step ahead of me.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good. I appreciate that. Uh, the less I have to do, the better. So we've got a motion and a second. Mike, do you want to do a roll call for this? Or is just, or I, I, I don't know how it works for now.
Um, yes, we would do a roll call for this, um, and if there's no discussion, I can go into that.
Yeah, is there any discussion on that motion before we go to the vote?
No, just to clarify, when we do the roll call vote, that a yes vote means no for the variance.
Correct.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks. All right, here are no more comments or questions. I think we'll go ahead with the vote, Mike.
Phil?
Yes, mo- a yes vote means no to the variance, correct? Is that what you, um?
Correct.
Is that what you, and good?
Yep.
Y- yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Wallaker?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Mekus?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right, the motion passes to, uh, that this does not meet our requirements for a variance. Uh, so I think we're done with our business, are we not, Mike?
Uh, you are, yes.
And we can, anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Just, uh, uh, quickly before that, Phil, um, there, uh, there is another business item on your.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I was trying to get at. Ah, the, so the selection of ZBA rep for zoning ordinance update? Subcommittee?
Yes.
I totally missed that, so I appreciate you catching that. Well, I mean, does anybody want to volunteer for this position?
Has anybody signed off early? We can get them on it right away.
Just Mr. Dieters, can we get him to do it? I guess, no.
I don't believe so.
Well, I, I, uh, I'm more than happy to do it, but I have zero point zero time to be on another committee.
That is.
What's the time commitment expected to be like?
The, uh, there is a quote unquote job description in your packet. It will certainly involve some homework and it'll be a, a deep dive into the ordinance. Let's see. So the job. It's, yeah, one to two hours of, uh, of preparation per meeting per month.
So, so two hours ish a month?
That's the estimate.
I guess I can do it if no one else wants to do it.
That sounds like an affirmative for Chris.
Do we need to vote or do we just need a volunteer, Mike?
I'm just a volunteer is fine.
Well, you've, uh, got one on your line right now, so.
That's recorded, correct?
And we weren't even in the same room, so he couldn't have twisted his arm, so. So I think we're all done now, aren't we?
Uh, yes, you are.
Somebody want to move to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the November sixteen, twenty twenty, uh, ZBA meeting.
Mr. Wise has made a motion, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second him.
Well, we've got people fighting the adjournment, so, Mike, I'll let you pick.
I, I heard Wallaker first, so.
All right, all those in favor? I?
I.
Any opposed? All right, everybody have a great night.
Mike, do you mind? Do you might stay, Mike, do you might stay on for a second?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Good luck with that.
All right, bye, guys.
Bye, guys.
We figure out how to get out.
So, uh, what's expected of me here? I mean, I read, I read the kind of the position, but.
Um, so I, I, I think, um, the it'll be a, a pretty detailed overview of, of each of the, um, the relevant ordinance chapters, uh, and, and there'll be very in-depth discussions on each, each component of the standards. Um, I can forward you, um, so it'll be facilitated by Michelle and the city's planning consultants. Um, Megan, um, have you met Megan? Uh, hyphenated last name, Minak before with Carla Wartman?
I don't think so.
Well, she's, she's really good at group facilitation with really, uh, technical conversations. And there are some, um, uh, additional documentation from previous, uh, council and planning commission packets that give an overview of the scope or what the, kind of the, the general goals of the update and all the chapters that'll be covered. Um, so, um, there'll be plenty of other, um, savvy people there, so you won't be in like a spotlight, you know, for, um, you know.
Okay.
Groundbreaking recommendations, but I think any additional, uh, input, it will be, will be welcome. And certainly it's a more people with different professional backgrounds, I think helps the added perspective.
Okay.
Um, and, yeah, since, uh, I mean, since you're an attorney, I think you're used to like reading. Yeah, yeah. It can be too bad.
Yeah, no, I'm used to reading, I mean, I read ordinances, you know, we submit applications as well, so.
Okay, okay. And I think, I think Megan will, will be, uh, Megan and Michelle will give some good, uh, direction about like what specific areas of input they need and, um, and that sort of thing. So I, I can forward you more information tomorrow.
All right, perfect. And then, uh, do they just do a monthly meeting by Zoom? I, I take it?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm, I don't see why this wouldn't be by Zoom. I don't think they'd have to be in, in person for any reason.
Okay.
I don't believe they had a start, have a start date yet, but the tentative kickoff will be, uh, January.
Okay. And then do they have a specific day of the week? Is it kind of like us or no?
I'm, let me see. As far as I know, unless it's, I, I'm guessing they may reassess that once they know who's going to be on the subcommittee.
No, no, fair enough. All right, sounds good.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for volunteering.
Yeah, yeah, just keep me in the loop.
Okay, we'll do, all right.
Yep. Yeah, have a good night.
Bye.